Good morning and welcome to the June 18th County Commission Meeting. I'd like you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to turn your cell phones off, please, and meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly in the binder and Robert, not here. If you need a listening device, Ken will help you with that. We'll go ahead and get started with the agenda.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. You have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Any corrections, changes, additions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two are to approve the county commission minutes of June 11th, 2013.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Approve the minutes.
Second. A motion and a second? Any corrections or changes?
No.
If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes, two.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $243,948.55.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second with some comments, Mr. Barth.
I just want to mention today we have 130 bills under mental illness ranging from $15 to $1,200.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments about the bills today? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item five are reports. A is the auditor's account with the county treasurer as of May 31st, 2013. Item B is the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for May 2013. And item C is the Register of Deeds official statement of revenues collected during May 2013. Those reports are on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Approve the routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the routine action. Any comments, changes? Any questions for Carrie? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B, consider a motion to approve extension of funding through the Highway Safety Grant for the temporary grant-funded senior deputy state's attorney DUI vehicular crimes prosecutor from September 2013 through December 2013. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. You had the one special commission action request today and I see that Aaron was here. Do you have any questions?
So you want to have any questions for Carrie or for Aaron this morning? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the grant. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Morning Pam.
Morning.
Item six, application for abatement. Pam Nelson.
I have one elderly freeze, assessment freeze, abatement for a property ID number 46236 for the amount of $339.02.
Any questions for Pam this morning on the abatement?
I would move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the abatement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item seven, under notices and requests, is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Transportation on a public hearing scheduled to receive comment on the 2014-2017 statewide transportation improvement. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none today. Item nine is petition for compromise of lien. John Peckus.
Thank you Cindy. This is, the first is on several DPNOs. First is a DPNO number 61730 in the amount of $7,045.91 and DPNO number 6052 in the amount of $923.80. The applicant is currently requesting a compromise of the lien for the $7,000 lien. She requests the release of the lien as it applies to the real property currently, I guess, under close. My understanding is that we actually received a $7,000 check from the title insurance company that was held in escrow, right? And we are in custody of that particular check. The applicant is attempting to sell her home and this lien was noted by the title and company and actually, obviously, it went through close because it's being held in escrow. The applicant is approaching the commission with a request for the compromise regarding the same lien and at the time she requested the compromise of the lien was limited to $3,000. We rejected that particular request. At this time, she indicates that there are a number of charges associated with the current amount of money that is owed by the county that were incurred actually by her ex-boyfriend. The commission has confirmed that all the charges reflected on the lien were in fact incurred by this applicant. In researching this particular second lien in the amount of $923.80, that is actually in the name of her ex-boyfriend and spouse that is currently identified only as Andrea, or excuse me, the applicant's first name, but we don't know if it was actually this particular applicant other than the fact that they have the same first name. And of course, they have the property listed at the same address where they were both located. That lien is not included in the application for the compromise, but that lien is still out there. It is also important to remember that currently the public defender's office has two open files on the applicant. One is a felony case that was opened back in October and the other is a misdemeanor charge opened last month. And of course, those bills, of course, will be accruing and those liens will be getting larger as that case proceeds. The applicant currently has assets in the amount of $108,000 including the value of the home, including her vehicle. Her liabilities include $136,000 and of course, she has $30,000 in pending student loans and a mortgage currently resting against the property, $106,000. So at this point, I believe the request, once again, is to release the $7,000 check. She is here and she may wish to speak to the commission, she may not. She doesn't have to go on camera or anything. She can stand and address the commission where she's seated if she is here, but, oh, she didn't hear, okay. So regardless, I think the request that she would like is for us to turn the check back over.
Any questions for John? Is the applicant here? I don't believe so, but I want to make sure that she's not here and as John said, she doesn't have to identify herself and she can sit or come in wherever she may be if she's here. I don't see any movement, so we will go back to the action that's necessary.
Move to deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the lien compromise and returning of the check, correct?
Correct.
So that the lien will be paid in full of item number 61730.
Just one point. Was that check in the amount of $7,045.91?
It was.
Okay, just, yeah, yes.
The one that's still unclear, if I am interpreting this correctly, is 6052 of $923.80 is still outstanding.
But that's not been addressed?
No, it hasn't.
Yeah.
Neither have the other public defender accruing liens.
Correct. So we're just approving at this point, DPNO, item 61730 for $7,040.
No, we're not approving.
Denying, I'm sorry, denying DPNO. We're approving the deposit of the check, denying the return. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Thanks. Of 61730 of $7,045.91, I have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Kelly?
There actually is no lien now because it's been paid. You said money's in escrow right now? Or have we got?
We have a check, yeah, so I think it came out of escrow.
And this request is not, not to return it, it's just simply to, do we need to vote on it? That's my question.
Yes, we need to, yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I think we need a roll call vote just to make sure that we have this correct.
Commissioner Barth?
Hell, yes.
Hyberg?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
Yes.
Benega.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. That one just fit. And there's no action on DPNO, item 6052 of $923.80.
Well, just, just for a point of clarification, remember that particular lien is in the applicant's boyfriend, but whatever application that was made in relationship to that lien, it was indicated that he was married to a person with the same first name as our current applicant. Whether or not there's a connection there, we don't have it other than the fact that it's a, it's a statement. I believe it was verified under oath, so, you know, whether or not that was accurate or not, we won't find out until later.
Any other comments? Especially you, Jeff?
If not, we'll go to item B.
Thank you. This is on DPNO number 61269 in the amount of $216.66. The commission received an application to compromise this particular lien and the individual actually was married and unfortunately, the lien, the majority of the $2,234.22 was services that were provided by other counties. However, Minnehaw County only has $216.66 actually attributed to it. The applicant currently states that the services were poor relief that were provided actually to his ex-wife after they were divorced. And of course, once those services were provided, a lien was placed against both he and his ex-wife. Human Services actually confirmed that his ex-wife actually made the application back in 2006. Once again, the applicant has produced the divorce decree back showing that they were in fact divorced in 2005. So he is merely asking for a compromise and a release of the full amount of his responsibility for the lien and allow it to continue against his ex-wife. And so I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a resolution from the county auditor and from myself that to correct this, and this would suggest, this would say that it is to remove the applicant's name from DPNO of item 61269, leaving the lien in force only against the person listed as spouse.
And that's what John.
And that's what John said, but as long as we have the resolution, let's use it.
I have no problem with the resolution, so.
Super.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution and a second. Any other questions?
So we're, we're just doing our $216 portion. The lien still sits there, is that correct?
Right, against, against his ex-wife.
Right, and also, he has to resolve with the other counties the balance of that $2,200.
Yeah, and, and, his name's only off the 216 bucks it owes him.
I spoke with Julie Risti and she said since Robert has verified that none of the liens from the other counties were services provided to him, that we could remove his name from the lien and put her in as the lien, the first person on the lien.
That's fine.
That's what we're asking.
Right.
That's fine.
Any other questions? Good questions, comments? If not, like, motion to approve this resolution and again, I think we need to do this one.
Roll call?
By a roll call vote, Jeff, you want to start?
Jeff?
Aye.
Hyberg?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes. Thank you. Motion passes, 5-0.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is the time to come forward and discuss any items that you may have that aren't related to the agenda or are on the agenda. Is there anyone that has any public comment? I see no one coming forward, so we'll go to regular business.
Item 10 is a public hearing to consider applications for retail on off sale malt beverage license and retail on off sale wine license from Rocco's Catering for the Riviera by Rocco's Lot Two, Track One, Genie's Edition, Northeast Quarter and Southeast Quarter of Section 28, Township 101 North, Range 48 West, located at 26665 481st Avenue in Brandon. And the applications have all been reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office, Planning and Zoning Department and Sheriff's Office, and there were no objections or concerns reported by any department. The applicant, Matt Sapari, he is here to answer any questions that the commission may have. And just as a note, this business is for a catering and, catering and, pardon me? Banquet hall, there you go. It's being built in the Red Rock Corridor.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Matt, would you like to make any comments? You don't need to, but we'd love to hear from you. You'll need to come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Matt Sapari with Rocco's Catering. I'm just here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Does anyone have any questions for Matt?
Is this a license on the permit? This isn't a mobile license by any stretch, is it? It's strictly on that facility?
Yes.
And you have, you have a catering hall, is that what?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions for Matt? It appears that you're going to get off easy this morning, Matt. Because it's a public hearing, we also need to listen if there's anyone in opposition of this license. It appears that no one's opposing it.
I would move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the license. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good luck.
Item 11 is consider bid awards in conjunction with the Minnehaw County Highway Department. Annual materials letting bids open June 12th, 2013. Tom Wilsley.
Good morning, Tom Wilsley from the Highway Department. As for your approval, we've had a bid letting last Wednesday. Several of the items were listed, you've got the printout for that of how the bids turned out. We felt pretty good. All of our numbers pretty much matched what we had from last year, so nothing went up a lot. We did have about 10 items that did not get bid on. We'll have to buy them by proposals when we need.
Any questions for Tom?
Tom, could you move that microphone so you're looking right at it? Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Is there any chance that, you know, we could ask people to rebid on those other items that no one bid on or?
We'll consider that because we've, we've looked at it because some of these items were new items, but nobody else knew that we were bidding. So we're going to talk to people and see if we can get some bids on them. If we do that, we'll come to you with, to do it.
Good.
Any other questions for Tom? If not?
Oh, I do have one question. On the culvert.
Commissioner Kelly?
On the culverts and stuff, is that, that $305, is that per foot, per culvert? What?
Yes.
I'm looking at, say, number 18, but.
All culverts are bid by the foot.
Okay.
Again, any other questions? If not, could I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bid awards. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 12.
Item 12, consider a bid award for Project Seal 2013 asphalt surface treatment on 30.8 miles of county highway on portions of county highways 114, 120, 124, 130, and 148. Bids open June 12th. Tom Wilsley.
Yes, this bid, we had two bidders for the project. Asphalt surfacing company of Sioux Falls bid was red low. This is for 30.8 miles of chip ceiling, mostly up in the northeast corner of the county. I included with this, I believe, a map, yeah, I included a map so you could see which roads we're looking at. Total bid for asphalt surfacing company was read at $751,171.50. It's our recommendation, you approve this bid.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions for Tom? Tom, I'm not familiar with Road Guy Construction Company. Is that a local company?
They're an outfit out of Yankton.
Okay.
They have, they have actually had our bid the last five years.
Okay.
We've used them a lot.
But we only had one local company bid on the project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the asphalt surface treatment of 30.8 miles. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Tom?
Item 13 is consider a bid award for Project MC 50-150-202-2. Highway 139, superstructure replacement of the Ellis Bridge. Bids open June 12th.
Yes, this one is the bridge that's a quarter mile south of Ellis, over the Skunk Creek. This is the one that got posted down to half, half strength a year ago. This is a very strong truck route, so we are hoping to get this, we're going to replace the superstructure, upgrade the, the caps on the piers and redo the abutments on this. The bid came in quite a bit lower than our expected price. We only had two bidders. One of them was Sioux Falls Construction who got it and Swinging Construction who were 150,000 higher. So we are recommending that you award this bid to Sioux Falls Construction for the amount
Any questions for Tom?
Commissioner Peckus?
Next closest bid was about $150,000 more than that.
Yes. And there were only two bidders.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Second.
And this, and actually their Swingers who were second was real close to what our estimate was.
I know, I noticed that. Well, yeah, I mean, you guys were.
So I would have been happy with their bid.
Yeah, I could have lived with it too, but I mean, this is like picking up money off the floor, so I'm going to make a motion.
Second.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second.
May I make one more comment?
Absolutely.
Our plan is to have this construction done this fall.
Great.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 14 is consider a bid award for Project MC 140 MS-13. 1.2 miles of micro surfacing on county highway 140. Bids open June 12th.
This is a new type of material that we've never done, so we're very interested in seeing how this works for us. We only had one bidder, but it came in right at about what we expected for the cost. The cost for micro surfacing is about half the cost of what an overlay would be, so we feel we're going to save some money by doing it this way. This gets a lot of truck traffic, so this road is one that we say, this is good, good experiment, see how it works for us. The bid, we recommend you award it to them is to Aztec Corp. and it's for the price of
Any questions for Tom?
Where's this road at?
This is just east of the Ellis Road, north of Ellis. There's a paved road half a mile north. It goes from the Ellis Road going east towards the.
Oh, to the high school, or junior high?
Towards the new, junior high.
Yeah, okay.
We're taking it right up to the city limits there.
Any other questions? If I'm not mistaken, Tom, I think the city has tried this also.
The city does a lot of this.
And they've had some really good success.
Yes, a lot, you go in, a lot of those developments on the southwest side of town, they've got almost all of them covered with this and the first one they did was on southeastern and that was, I'm not sure, I think, I want to say five years ago and it's still holding up. So we're, we have high hopes.
I think their experience has been extremely positive, not only from a cost standpoint, but longevity has been very good.
Very good.
Yeah.
Other people are trying it now too. The city of Brandon is doing some, Harrisburg is doing some, I believe, and I don't remember. I think maybe Key has got some that are trying too. There was a letting that they had and there was three cities that went together and bid it. I think those are the three cities, going from memory.
Well, I hope your test project goes as well as everyone else's has.
I have high hopes for it.
Any other comments, questions? If not, need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the, of the micro surfacing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 15 is to consider a motion to approve a resolution to increase Minnehaw County building permit fees effective August 1st, 2013. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson from the Planning Department and last week I briefed you on our desire to revisit or to look at our, the fee schedule that we charge for permits for residential and agriculture permits. We periodically review these fees and change and increase them based on the inflation CPI and I put this down for you to look at here. This is done by resolution and just to give you an idea of how we calculate and the method that we use for determining a building permit fee, we look at each building based on size and we then calculate for like a new house, we would take the finished area and we would calculate the square footage times $81 a square foot and likewise, we would calculate any unfinished basement, any decks, any attached garages. And then we would take, that will give us an amount and then we take 0.4% of that and that's the building permit fee. Today, all we are, all we're asking you to look at is the fee that we use to calculate the square footage. Currently, we are charging for a stick-built residential habitable space. Right now, we charge $79.75 a square foot estimated for construction. We're proposing that that would go up to $81. Likewise, the schedule showed you, there's, basically, it's just a 1% increase. I have provided this information to the Sioux Empire Home Builders and they've reviewed it, they've passed it on to their constituents. I haven't heard anything from any of the constituents or Todd from home builders, so I'd be glad to answer any questions. This is a resolution if you'd like to ask me any questions, but it's not a public hearing, but you certainly can treat it as such if you'd like.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott? Is there any feedback from the audience? Evidently not. We don't see any unfamiliar faces this morning. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that the fact that we have not had any feedback from the home builders to this point indicates that this is not found to be unreasonable. I know that the Planning Department is doing this so as not to have a large increase, you know, every eight years or something. So just like everything else, this is an attempt to try to make it more palatable, easier to work with. And so if there's no more discussion, I guess I would make a motion to approve this.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to improve, to approve the building permit fees effective August 1st. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign a contract with Turbies Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $6,632.74 for plumbing work in the Expo Building at the WH Lions Fairgrounds. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, normally on a contract of this size, we wouldn't bring this to you if it's within, you know, the authorized budget, but because of the fact that this allocation originally started off as asphalt work within the building fund to be used out of the WH Lions Fairgrounds. As you may recall, the building committee did review a request from the Fair Association that since the city was doing some significant asphalting out at the fairgrounds this year, that they be allowed to use this money for other purposes. So this is the first expenditure of that particular allocation of $20,000 for some work that they've identified out at the Expo Building to upgrade some plumbing issues or to fix some plumbing issues out at the Expo Building. So we've got a contract here in the amount of $6,632.74. dollars and seventy-four cents to Turbis Plumbing and Heating out of Garrettson in order to do the work, and so we would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Ken. Anyone have any questions about the plumbing contract? What, Commissioner Kelly?
I just have a question on the, the asphalting, was that, we approved, was that site-specific or was that just to different?
No, that was to the fairgrounds itself, for work on the fairgrounds, and like I said, they've been able to make some arrangements with the city due to some other things that they work out with the city, you know.
The city did, the city did the, the new building.
The city's provided some significant asphalting out there, and they would like to use this money that was for that purpose for other uses, and the building committee said that that was all right, so. But we're bringing the contract to you because this is the very first of that repurposing of that money.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If not, like a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the plumbing and heating contract for the Expo Building. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item seventeen is to consider a motion to approve acceptance of seven thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents from Drug Control Fund from the Office of the Attorney General and approve equipment purchases. Aaron McGowan.
Morning, Aaron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Aaron McGowan, Minnehaha County State's Attorney. I'm here today to ask the commission to formally approve accepting the funding from the Attorney General's Drug Fund for several pieces of technology. I can tell you what prompted this request is that the Attorney General's Office came to my office to present some new technology and trial software they had, and our technology unfortunately was so outdated that they couldn't even put on a demonstration because we have a, I think a fifteen-year-old tube TV and VCR unit, so we had to watch it on a laptop. I discussed these challenges with Attorney General Jackley. He encouraged me to make a request from the Drug Fund. We've done so, the Attorney General's Office has been kind enough to award us with this money. I do have a check in hand today for a little over seven thousand, four hundred dollars for some trial software, laptops, and TVs. What this will allow us to do on drug cases is present the evidence to the jury in a much more efficient manner. Some of you may know, in some of our trials, we have over a hundred and fifty, two hundred exhibits that we present. We can incorporate it with the software, especially with our meth lab cases where everything is demonstrative photographs because everything's so toxic, it has to be destroyed. This will be a, a big assistance in us fighting those drug battles on hundreds of felony cases every year.
Any questions for Aaron? John?
Would these flat panel screen LEDs be on a cart that you could move up? You know, I gotta tell you, you know, we used to use the old Elmos. You could really get a pretty large screen, granted, you had to turn the lights down, but I've had some trials in there, in my own personal experience, the jurors have a tough time seeing the TVs across the room. I mean, unless you've got your bifocals, trifocals with ya, you just as soon print out a copy and hand it to the jurors, because when you put a regular TV screen across the room, they can't see it. Is that kinda what you're talking about?
Actually, we're looking at both, Commissioner, and it's a great question, because we've had challenges not only with the jury being able to see our evidence on a screen, but also the differences of technology from when we prep it in office to when we take it over and use the equipment within the courthouse. So, we will both have an internal TV, but we will also have the laptops, MTVs on carts, and oftentimes, we have two jury trials going at the same time, so we can use those carts over there and have the exact same technology the case was prepped on, so we can take that to the courtroom for the jurors to view.
You know, and that, just to let the commission know, I know personally of a circumstance where, I wasn't one of the lawyers, but I know that there was a technology issue to the extent that it caused a mistrial, and we ended up having to pay about three grand for that.
And we've had...
Because of a technology malfunction in front of the jury, so...
Occasionally, the audio will be different when we prep it, and it'll be more pronounced in trial, and there'll be something that should've been edited previously, but we couldn't hear it when we prepped the case in office.
This was a civil case, it had nothing to do with Aaron's office, but it, it's just an example that when we have technology that doesn't jive correctly, we create our own problems, so, yeah. Interesting.
Any other questions or comments? I, I would just reiterate the fact that I was over to Aaron's office for another discussion last week for a few minutes, and he shared with me that just last week, they had fifty-five new felonies in one week. That's more than one an hour. I mean, this has just gotten crazy, and the technology to help you be more efficient is important, and I'm glad that frankly, the presentation that you gave to the Attorney General failed so you could get this grant.
I sent Mr. Jackley a picture from my phone of our tube TV and VCR, and he quickly encouraged me to make the request.
Very good.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the request to use the drug funds for equipment purchases. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks for sharing, Sarah, with us today too.
Item eighteen is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Does anyone have any liaison reports? Commissioner Hyburger?
I do, and mine actually kinda went along with sixteen, but I decided to wait it till for the liaison report, and that was about, about the asphalting, and that the city has just completed the east side asphalting of the Johnson-Norstrom Building, and they still have some more asphalting to complete tomorrow. This is an example of the cooperative work that's been going on between the county and the city, where they've done a very large amount of asphalting for us out of the fairgrounds due to the memorandum of understanding that we put into place this last year, where they now are, by giving us product or whatever, doing things for us, paying for the other services that we've been giving in, in the past years, and it's been a very good program going forward. They also, we stored all their, what do you wanna say, let them dump all their tree branches there during the ice storm, and that is now almost all removed. If you've been out there, they're also clearing, clearing that lot off and leveling it, and we'll be gravelling the whole west side area from the asphalt road on the east side of the, of the fairgrounds, and they'll be gravelling that whole parking lot for us. So, it ended up to be a really good deal for the city and for us. They had a place to dump their trees, and we're gonna have a nice parking lot when we're done, so, just an example of good work together.
Thank you, city. Any other liaison reports this morning?
So, I just wanna, so the bonfire's off?
The bonfire is off, it's just dirt now.
Is that building operational now?
I haven't talked to him. It wasn't two weeks ago. I know they were really close to finishing, but I haven't asked him in the last two weeks if they finished all the extra, extra hogups.
Any other liaison reports or questions? If not, we'll go to new business. Anyone have any new business? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chair, I, noting that our calendar is moving forward, I'd like to suggest that we consider any legislative issues we want to bring to the state convention this September that we can bring to the Association of County Commissioners. You know, whether it's alcohol tax, whether it's some other tweak to statutes under which we function, we should consider what they may be, and that would be true for any department in our county that, that had those kinds of issues. We should, I think they have to be in by July thirty-first, so we should put that on our agenda to try to bring it up.
Good point. Any other new business, other than the fact that I believe tonight at six o'clock, we start budget hearings, and they'll be held here in this room, and hopefully, we'll all be able to be in attendance. I know everybody has conflicts over the next few weeks as far as trying to attend everything, but we're going to have the majority of us here, and...
Mr. Chair, my brother's flying in tonight at five forty from Fiji, so I'm going to be absent for at least part of two weeks festivities.
We understand that. Morning, Mr. Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner, I was gonna call you counsel here, but Commissioners, late yesterday afternoon at four o'clock, I met at, at the Carnegie Town Hall, and the city representatives for elections were there, as well as the school representatives for elections, and we went over a, a few issues. One of them would be ADA inspection that we've got coming up jointly for the common election sites that we all agreed upon, and we're gonna go over with an ADA specialist to make sure that things are up to snuff in that regard. The other thing that, that came up, I've been in conversations with Monty Wadambach about technology and elections. As most of you know, I'm, I tend to favor the e-poll books, and, and we're moving on those, you know, getting information and resolving any technology questions that Mr. Wadambach has, and we've got a couple of meetings set up in the future, and one of them would be with Heart Technology and Monty, and the other would be with Secretary of State Jason Gant and myself and, and Monty. And in these conversations, we talked about HAVA funds and how much is in there, and right now, there's about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I believe. If we go with the poll books, that's gonna take care of about four hundred of that, leaving the remaining balance. The other question that was brought up was how about our six fifty counting machines down there, you know? These were bought in two thousand and six, and I originally was under the mistaken impression that the school and the city had went in on those with thirds, or, you know, some sort of division of the cost for those machines, but the school insists that Sue bought them out of the HAVA funds and that the county was solely responsible for them. And I brought up that in four or five years, those machines are gonna be hard to fix, and, you know, they're getting out in ages, and we should probably be looking at something else, as, as has been suggested by some of you Commissioners. And so, to that end, my proposal to them yesterday was, would the school and the city be interested in putting amounts of money into their budget so in four or five years we can replace these machines? And they were both very agreeable to that, and I thought that was a, a step up from the old one where the county paid for all of them, so. And if you'd like me to get a memorandum of understanding from each of those entities regarding this, I'd be glad to do that, but it was, it was a deal. Mr. Vic from the school is there, and he says he's gonna put thirty thousand dollars a year, you know, going forward each year towards that end, and then Councilman Inman and Lori Hogstad from the city were there, and they both agreed too, because they do not want to have their own machines or operate their own machines down there. So, we've kinda got that going forward. If you, if you're agreeable to that, like I said, I could get a memorandum of understanding that that's the place we wanna go to. So, that was the information I wanted to bring to you today.
Thank you. Any questions on the HAVA funds or the equipment needs? Commissioner Kelly?
Are you talking a third, a third, a third, and on the, on the county?
Well, actually, the deal would be was, the county would buy two of those machines, the school would buy one, and the city would buy one. And I think that represents a rough proportionality to the amount of work that, that we require from each entity on those machines.
Do you have a idea, Bob, on what the cost is?
Right now, the eight fifties are their latest offering, and that may even change or get upgraded by the time we do buy them, but that was ninety-seven thousand dollars apiece for each one of those machines as of today, and I don't think they're gonna get cheaper.
Probably not. Mr. Hyburger?
Do you know what year you're planning on, on purchasing new machines? I'm taking it's not this year, and it's not two thousand and fourteen either, it'll be a couple of years, five years from now.
Five years from now, that's what, that's what Mr. Wadambach and myself looked at, the lifespan of those machines, and we figured, we're hoping to get that much out of it. But folks, they're a used car, the mechanic stuck his nose under the hood here last year, and he reported that they're good, but it's a used cars.
So, are you proposing that we do the same thing? We plug into the budget each year some money, so...
No, no, sir. You will not need to do that, and what I'm telling you is, even if we go with the HAVA funds, there is still enough money left over to buy two of these machines in the end of five years.
Okay.
Any other questions for Bob? Thank you for the information.
Thanks for your time.
Any other new business from the department heads or from Commissioners? Any old business? Commissioner Barth?
I'd like to bring up two items, I guess, and just quickly, I saw where the labor union stepped in to try to support the fireworks at the fairgrounds. I hope that their presentation here from the J.C.'s was part of bringing community awareness on that issue. But secondarily, you know, a couple of weeks ago, we, we met and tabled the idea of refunding our bonds, and I think we should pick a date specific to bring this back up, because just in the last week, I know that interest rates have gone up ten basis points, and, you know, potentially, you know, if you lose a percent, you know, on tens of millions of dollars, it adds up to quite a chunk of money, you know? It may only be a thousand dollars on a million, but, or ten thousand dollars on a million, but, you know, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on seventeen, and so, anyway, I just want to suggest that we bring that back up, and I, I guess, since our auditor is here, maybe I would ask him, you know, and maybe should consider what kind of process we would go to. Should we have RFPs? Should we have? We've had presentations by two companies, and I think we're all better educated.
Well, you've kinda stolen the information that I had written down. The issue is, is that I think that the only fair way to do this is by an RFP, and I think that we've all been informed enough that we understand that the fact that we don't wanna miss, mix the financial advisor responsibility with an underwriter, at least that's what I've heard from the majority of your comments. So, I think the RFP needs to be addressed in that sort of scenario. I also believe that by the time we have this process started, that we'll be into the budget session enough to understand exactly what we may be looking at for capital programs, and the other thing is, when it was presented to us originally, there were no specific bonds that were identified on what could be refunded or refinanced at that time. It was more of a quote, "global" process, so we need to identify those and make them specific, and that would be part of the financial advisor's responsibility also, so I think we will be looking at that in a short period of time. Commissioner? Commissioner? Yeah, Commissioner McFarland?
Commissioner Litz?
Thanks upon your discussion that you had on this item the last couple times when, first time when the auditor presented, they had some information, and then with Doherty Dawkins, it was, it was our understanding staff-wise that this was an issue that you wanted to look at specifically when we had the capital improvement schedule, budget hearing, which is scheduled for, I believe, July seventeenth, and that is when that's scheduled. So, we have one night set aside to do all of our building kind of issues, and that, if you would like to change that, we certainly can, but that's the assumption that we've been operating on at this time.
That's what I was trying to say, is that we were doing it through budget hearings, but I definitely didn't say that correctly, so...
I was just giving the date.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Litz?
Thanks again, Commissioner. See, I just wanted you to know, the reason that I had to bring that forward, I felt like I had to bring that forward was in early part of June, even though the timing was, let's say, just a little unfortunate, was that was the recommended date that we start that refunding, and that was by, that would've been by Doherty or PFM. The reason that they started then is because you can do that, you can only get the money back ninety days before they're callable, it's the first of the year, which puts you into late September, early October. That would be the fur, the quickest time that you could get any perceived benefit from this anyway. The numbers I could give you today as, that are close enough for budget numbers, it's gonna be two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars the first year, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the subsequent seven years, so you could plug those numbers in. The real question that I see is, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about, we're gonna build this, or, you know, maybe this needs, you know, there's, there's quite a few needs out there, perceived needs for, for infrastructure, and bringing those things forward, and, and when we bond for those, could have, the, the way we restructure this debt with the refunding could affect those things, and that's, that's the real issue that I see today. It's not which column that the, that the savings would go into, I think you can deal with that at any time, but like I say, the restructuring of the debt to me is, is kind of a big deal. I think that, you know, if we had something really pressing, that, that maybe, maybe the idea that we hold off on that until the seventeenth would, you know, have some merit, and, but I, I also, and yesterday before this subject came forward, I had asked a financial advisor to try to roughly figure out if we are losing any money between now and July seventeenth and what that amount might be. I did not get a response to that yet, but I'd be glad to forward that at such a time as we get. Second, second.
The other question I have, if there's no other question, go ahead, Commissioner Kelly. You referred to our financial advisor. Do we have one now?
We don't have one, and I've been consulting with PFM on a number of things here since we did it, since the, the original proposal that Doherty Company brought forward. I guess I was comfortable talking with those folks.
That was just my question, I didn't know the way you stated it.
No, actually, technically, we don't have one, you know? We don't have a financial advisor right now that's under contract or anything, and neither one of them would charge for any services at this point, you know, on, on any of these matters, so, I guess it was which one that I was comfortable with. I believe the amounts too, it said here a while back that the amounts of savings, regardless of who does it, is gonna be the same, so there's a pretty well a, a track process once this thing starts, and the numbers are gonna be what they're gonna be.
I guess my other question is, is, you know, why haven't we been contacted, or why haven't we reached out to banks and, you know, brokerage firms, that kinda stuff? I think they've been helpful in the past in some areas. The other thing is, there was conversation at one time about what we could do with that refunding, and it was suggested that we could make building payments, and that kinda stuff, which we found out that that wasn't the case. You know, there's more black and white law, so to speak, that says what we can and can't. You know, there's more black and white law, so to speak, that says what we can and can't do with it. And as, we probably all have been in touch with, with some of the people who have an interest in this to move forward, so at some point, we need to put together an RFP that I frankly think is generic enough so that we have a lot of people considering this as a quote, not just the ones who have stepped up to the plate lately, even if we've had a long-term relationship with them, I think it has to be an open process.
You know, and to that end, the school recently did an RFP process, and, and Doherty and PFM were the only two that answered. Now, their bond's a little bit bigger than ours, but of course, we're looking down the road here, and we have some issues that other people would be interested in. We are a smaller issuer, and this is, in the bond world, our 10, 11 million dollars that we're gonna refund on the 2004 series, incidentally, is, is small potatoes compared to what's going on out there, so I think we're lucky to have anybody looking at it at all, frankly, so.
Well, I still think that the intent was, from the very beginning, is to do this through the, the budget process, because then we knew what we were going to have for, potentially, we'll know what we're gonna have for capital programs, and that's an important piece of this because, you know, we've got four, maybe five requests for projects. We have no idea what the size of those are. That's changed dramatically. We don't know where it's going to be in a priority of when they're gonna be built, which affects, obviously, when people issue bonds, so there's a lot of unknowns to this whole process.
Commissioner, that goes back to my point about the structuring of the debt for looking at future debts that might be added on.
Other questions for the auditor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I guess I totally agree with what you said, and, and July 17th is fine, but I, I really think we should try to begin preparing an RFP and having it ready to fire off at whatever date we determine, because the process is gonna take some time, you know, to, to get even the two bidders.
Commissioner McFarland?
Can we get him a chair up here?
I was gonna suggest that.
Commissioner Barth, we can, we can have an RFP ready really quickly because we actually have a couple of examples of RFPs that we've done twice in our past history, one when we did the jail and one far earlier, and I actually still have copies of those RFPs and how they were structured and what we asked for, so it would, we could actually do an RFP within an afternoon using past ones as a guide. So, we do have them.
And I also think that besides the fact that we've had those examples that Ken just talked about, we did get an extension of cooperation, if you will, from this, Mr. Turbach at the city, saying that he would be happy to be part of the advisory group, if you will, to do something if we wanted to do that. And he sent us a letter, I think, to the effect of telling us what his recommendations were, so we got plenty of opinions. It's just to move forward with it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
If I may, I, I did get RFPs way back when this, this issue first came up, and of course redoing those, and I believe both of those entities, the RFPs that they will respond to quickly, as quickly as Mr. Far, McFarland can send it out, would be very similar to the ones that we received back then. So, I think that they're, those two entities are ready.
How much time do you think it takes to put together an RFP?
I guess that is with the, with the examples and the copies that we have from prior RFPs that we did on this process, and that it's just a matter of tweaking it, we could accomplish that within a day or so, just to get them ready to, ready to go for review, and then so we've got the guts of the RFPs already in the, the boilerplate already done.
One other question, though, is if we don't know exactly how much the capital programs are gonna be-
That's true.
-isn't it pretty tough to put together some of the criteria?
It is, and that, but like I said, we have the guts of the RFP done, so we can turn them around rather quickly once we know some other key information.
Okay.
So, it's not gonna take us long. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel and having to do, do it from scratch, so we just have to use the boilerplate we have, plug in some other specific criteria that we would like to, and they'll be ready.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
A couple. In the paper this morning, there was just a little blurb. I don't know if anybody else saw, Meister, Bob Meister is being inducted into the Highway Hall of Fame. Is that?
I didn't see that.
Oh. It was on page two, way down in the corner.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, I just, and then the second thing is, are we gonna take any action on this Tri Valley request for, for the siren?
Commissioners, we've made arrangements with Tri Valley, and that we got the letter. We've given you an advanced copy of it, but it's our intention to schedule that as an agenda presentation for next week, and that the school district folks will be here. Lynn's been out of town on vacation, so we wanted to hold off until he was available here to provide some input, so that'll be next week.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
That particular issue, you know, our cryptic comments today may not be understandable to the public, so I think a little, maybe an explanation about that letter which we got would be good, just so people know what we're talking about.
Good question. Want to give us a little more detail, Ken?
Sure. We just, we got some, we had a letter from, from Tri Valley School District requesting that an emergency siren be placed near the location of the school, and that, you know, for weather alerts and those types of things, and that, and so Lynn has seen the letter. We will be bringing that request to you. I mean, that's a prob, most of those sirens, as I understand, are done through grants as those grants become available, and that, so, but Lynn is very well aware of it, and again, we will, we're scheduling the presentation and some information for you next week.
I might, we, Commissioner Hyberger?
I just have one more comment to add, and that was the reason Tri Valley's requesting it, is they have approximately 900 people there, you know, when school is in session, and they are not by a town where they can hear a emergency siren, so that was the reason for the request.
And we all got copies of the letter, and I think we can share that with media if they would like to have that, so. Any other comments? If not, we need to go into executive session for a contract and legal briefing and personnel. Do we have a motion to do that?
Some of.
Second. Motion and a second to go into the executive session. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Concert and-